Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing on zoning and franchises. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices, and at no time is anyone supposed to approach the dais. If you have any questions, please see one of the sergeant-at-arms. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee of Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. I am joined by Councilmember Shoumen Salam Kar Abreu Narcisse Holden, and remotely by Moya. Today, we are scheduled to hold seven hearings. The first hearing concerns the first sidewalk café application that the council will hear under the revised regulations and concerns, LU 124, which is an application by Wings and Seafood. The second hearing concerns the city map actions relating to the Bronx Metro North Project, which we heard earlier this month on July 9th, and consists of LU's 109 to 113. The third hearing concerns LU's 114 to 116 for a project known as 500 Kent Avenue. The fourth hearing concerns LU's 120 and 121 for a project known as 712 Myrtle Avenue. The fifth hearing concerns LU's 119 for a project known as 197 Berry Street. The sixth hearing concerns LU's 122 and 123 for a project known as Prince Point. And the seventh and last hearing concerns LU's 117 to 118 for a project known as 3033 Avenue V. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify must testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse. To sign up, and for those of you here in person, please see one of the sergeant-at-arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting as the council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by myself to speak. When you are recognized, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have a written testimony you would like the Subcommittee, instead of appearing in person, please email it to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. Written testimony may be submitted up to three days after the hearing is closed. Please indicate the LU number or the project name in the subject line of your email. We request that the witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by myself, as councilmembers may have questions. Lastly, for everyone attending today's meeting, this is a government proceeding, and decorum must be observed at all times. Members of the public are asked not to speak during the meeting unless you are testifying. The witness table is reserved for people who are called to testify, and no video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing records. I will now open up today's first public hearing on LU's 124 related to the Wings and Seafood Sidewalk Café application in Councilmember Holden's district. The application seeks to operate a sidewalk café with approximately five tables and seven seats at an existing establishment in Ridgewood, Queens. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do that by emailing it to us at landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would like to give the floor to Councilmember Holden, if he has any remarks.
Yes, good morning, Chair Riley, and members of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I'm here today to address the land use call-up application for Wings and Seafood. That's LU 124, located 785 Fairview Avenue in Ridgewood, Queens, within my district. My office has received numerous complaints from constituents about the ineffective use of this establishment's already-set outdoor dining spaces. Their application for a sidewalk café seems excessive, given the current circumstances. This establishment is located near a busy subway station, a school, a library, an after-school program, and a park, all of which contribute to the heavy foot traffic in the area. Here are some of my constituents' concerns. The current outdoor dining setup is rarely in use and is often used as storage. This wastes valuable space and takes up much-needed parking in Ridgewood, a neighborhood already notorious for its parking challenges. Now, I have cars parked at hydrants constantly in that area, in crosswalks, even on the sidewalk. On several occasions, the outdoor dining structures have been used for decorative purposes rather than their intended use, further highlighting they're really underutilized. Even a Google Maps shows in 2022 shows an inflatable dragon set up in the street. So this is what I'm talking about. This particular sidewalk is heavily used, being right at the entrance or exit of the Forest Avenue M train station and just a block away from a park and IS 93 school. In addition, the addition of a sidewalk café would only exacerbate the congestion in the busy area. It is also worth noting that before their sidewalk café application was even approved, Wings and Seafood had already constructed the structure that they're providing. They're providing a photograph, and they erected a structure attached to the building illegally to house the sidewalk café. They were issued a summons on July 16th for an unauthorized build-out. And here's the summons. The applicant essentially created this extension of the building. Several flags came up that caused this call-up in the first place, and that's why we needed this to be heard in the Subcommittee. I look forward to hearing why the applicant feels the sidewalk café is needed. I would also like to see a decision from the applicant on whether they will choose to proceed with either the sidewalk café or the outdoor dining setup, but not both. Again, I want to thank the Chair, and I do have photographs, if the committee would like to see, the current structure. Thank you. I'll pass that around for the members.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. I would now like to call the applicant panel for this item, which consists of Kichun Wang, who will also be accompanied by a translator, who is going to translate in Mandarin for her. Council, please administer the affirmation.
Hello. Could you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
You could press the button on the mic. Yes?
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this Subcommittee and in your answers to all councilmember questions?
是的
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
谢谢
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization before you begin. You may begin.
我叫Kichun Wang，餐厅是Wings and Seafood
My name is Kichun Wang. I am the owner of the restaurant named Wings and Seafood.
Does he want to make any statement regarding this application?
哦，我想说的，我需要这个外面这个，呃，这个 sidewalk，这个，这个 café
还有呢 嗯哼，这就讲完了是吧？ Okay.
I would like to express my demanding. I do need this sidewalk for continue to running my restaurant business because without this sidewalk space, my restaurant would have been closured. As you know, during the pandemic, the business was very hard to continue. I had less client walked into my restaurant. So I highly petition, let me, allow me to have this sidewalk café. This is the key element I can continue my business, I can continue survive.
How long has he operated this sidewalk café?
你的这个 sidewalk 的 café，你一共运营了多长时间呢？
我这个跟外面马路边这个是怎么讲？
讲 sidewalk 这个
sidewalk 这个，一，一起的，以前的时候是里面有摆桌子的，后边
多长时间
It's been around three years since the pandemic.
And how long has he been operating his business in the area?
I have been running this business for about five years.
I have no more questions for this applicant panel. Councilmember Holden, do you have any questions?
Yes, how many tables are inside the café?
你， indoor restaurant，对吧？
In the restaurant, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, yes.
There are seven tables inside.
And does the applicant plan to use both the street, and he needs both the street and the sidewalk café? So actually, he's got two outdoor dining spaces. Does he intend to keep the... I know he's applying for a sidewalk café. Does he intend to keep the street dining area, which is a large structure?
是，thank you. 他现在问你哈，议员，你在外面你有那个 sidewalk 跟那个 street，就是两个嘛 这是你希望的哈
啊，是的
Yes, I have applied both outdoor spaces. I would hope to keep both.
And how many extra tables would this give you then? The outdoor space in the street, constituents are saying it's not being used, or it hasn't been used during the past few months. So why should we approve an application for additional dining, not only in the street but the sidewalk café?
In terms of vacancy, actually due to the winter weather just passed, so additionally, we are doing some renovation for the outside space and the tables. So since I have heard of the news from the city, we might be allowed to extension for four months functioning, so I'm continuing my plans. After the renovation, I'm gonna to resume the usage of the outdoors for the business purpose. Furthermore, I have received lots of positive feedbacks for agree with, for like the support for the outdoor space usage from my neighbor, my clients, and the people passing my restaurant.
You understand the problems with the parking in the area, right? Do you see that parking is... There are very few spots in that area. It's near the Greater Ridgewood Youth Council. There's a, it's a very busy area, not only schools and parks, but you're taking up space in the street. Now you want to take up space on the sidewalk. So my question is that you received the summons from the Department of Buildings. You added on to the building illegally, building a shed for the sidewalk café without checking with the building department or without even going through the proper procedure. You got a violation. What do you intend to do with that structure, since it is illegal? That's attached to the building.
嗯，thank you. 你现在占据了 sidewalk 跟那个 street 两个这个空间 那个传票显示的就是说，你那非法的，没有按照那个规定，你有建造那个顶棚啊，你的那个 sidewalk 上面哈你室外的那些建筑
我们这条路并不忙，很忙的在前面那一条路，First Avenue 那边比较忙，我们这并不是很忙
嗯
In the beginning, after getting approved from the city's guideline, I had built up the street café and the constructions. Everything has been done according to the approval and the guidelines from the city, but not out of my own wills. So I just do follow whatever the instructions given to me regarding the structures building. In terms of, you mentioned this is a very busy area. I would like to point out, the busy area core area is by the First Avenue, but not specifically my street. The street I am on is less busy area. So no matter what, if I get approval from the city, I may be allowed to extend the functioning use for another four years, which might have some like conflict with taking up the parking lot, which is like a conflict, I admit.
Right, but you're taking up valuable parking, and the structure that you have in the street, I'm being told, is not used. In 2022, this is September of 2022, I'll show the Committee also, there is an inflatable structure taking up where parking could be or where dining could be. You elected not to use it for dining, you have this inflatable. Now what's the purpose of this? If you don't need it for dining, apparently, it doesn't look like it's being used. So what was the purpose of this?
嗯，那个可以，可以这样子 我们为了吸引生意，就是这样子
好，okay. This inflatable outside is actually a decor for soliciting the business in the beginning when we was approved to set up the outdoor side café business. Later on, with the business went up well, I actually took it down. So this doesn't have any like endangered area.
Well, again, it's illegal. So adding to your building without a permit with the building department is illegal also. But you say you need dining space, you need tables, and yet you don't use it in the street. So that's why this application is suspect, and I would recommend that it be turned down. The sidewalk café, it's either the sidewalk café or, not and, or, at least in my view, or the street dining. For the neighborhood, and the neighborhood doesn't want both. And that's what my constituents are telling me, it's unnecessary. And also, if you're going to abuse the system, then again, why should we honor the application? And it shows in the past, he has abused, the applicant has abused the system. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. Councilman Shoumen?
好，等一下
Good morning.
然后他现在就是说你不能同时要那个 sidewalk 跟你外面的那个 street，就是你两个不能同时都要 他就觉得你没怎么用，等一下，等我讲完 Okay, yeah, I have finished translation. 等一下
Thank you, Councilwoman Shoumen?
Yes, so I know that, I believe that he said, you said that you follow the city guidelines, but there are new guidelines now that go into effect as of August 3rd. Wait a minute. Okay. And so, under the new guidelines, the street café has to be built a certain way. There are guidelines and how, and it can't be in the street from November to April. So it has to be taken out of the street, and then it doesn't get put back into April. I just want to make sure that that's understood.
然后他现在跟你讲，你关于你那个 street café 啊，就是市政府新规定，你就是从11月到4月的时候，你不能摆，要撤掉 Okay, okay. Yes, understood what you have told me, but I want to let you know, I have submitted my new application to the city along with the blueprint. And 你那些交上去有被通过吗？ Yes, understood, okay. Currently, regarding the new application along with the blueprint, we are in the midst communication, communicating with the city department, try to get the final result.
Okay, just so you're aware, every street entity has to have... It's all gonna be the same, they're all gonna have the same design, and they all have to comply with that design. If they don't, the city will take it out, the city will remove it.
Okay
So that's, so just make sure that that's understood. You can send in all the blueprints you want, the city has its own blueprint. Am I correct in that, Bob?
他是说你所有的要在街边摆这样的，就是要摆在外面的哈，这个 street 的这些哈，你做这个 Yes, understand, so I will comply with all the regulations and the guideline.
他已经那个，外面的 sidewalk 那个，已经政府都批准了，他已经都批准了，他说已经没有问题了
Okay, actually, I have been approved by the city regarding the sidewalk.
That's a previous one, they're not approving anything, August 3rd, people have to submit, so whatever was done previously is no longer in effect.
Surely, I will in there for following all the new guidelines.
Do you own any other restaurants?
你有其他的餐厅吗？
我现在没有了，我
只有这一间是吧？
对
I only have this one.
All right, thank you very much.
好，谢谢你的回答
Thank you, Councilwoman Shoumen. Are there any more questions from councilmembers? All right, there being no questions, this applicant panel is now excused.
Thank you, 好，可以了，我们可以讲完了
I just want to remind everyone that this was an application for the sidewalk café. This applicant panel has a separate application within DOT for a street café. Council, are there any members of the public who is to testify regarding the special permit applications relating to the Wings and Seafood Sidewalk Café application remotely or in person?
No, Chair.
All right. There being no members of the public who is to testify on LU 124 regarding... There being no members of the public who was to testify on LU one twenty-four regarding the wings and seafood sidewalk application, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open a second public hearing on LU's one oh nine through one thirteen related to the Bronx Metro North rezon- excuse me, Bronx Metro North neighborhood rezoning that is being spearheaded by the administration. This proposal consists of a rezoning, a text amendment, and several amendments to the city map. On July ninth, we held a public hearing regarding the text amendment and rezoning. Today, we are holding a public hearing regarding the proposed changes to the city map to facilitate the proposed redevelopment of Morris Park and Parkchester Van Ness areas. There are five mapping actions. LU one oh nine will eliminate part of Unionport Road between East Tremont and Girlande Street. LU one ten would widen Macaroni Street in Morris Park neighborhood. LU's one eleven will map a new pest- pedestrian, excuse me, pla- excuse me, pedestrian, can't speak today, plaza at thirteen twenty Morris Park Avenue in front of the new station entrance at Morris Park. LU's one twelve will extend Macaroni Street to connect to Pelham Parkway. LU's one thirteen will map a new street within one of the large development sites located at sixteen oh one Bronxville Avenue. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council dot N Y C dot gov slash land use. And once again, for anyone with us in public, excuse me, with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to us at land use testimony at council dot N Y C dot gov. Council, are there any members of the public who was to testify regarding the special permit application related to the Bronx Metro North mapping application?
No, Chair.
All right. There being no members of the public who was to testify on LU's one oh nine through one thirteen regarding the Bronx Metro North mapping action, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open today's third public hearing on LU's one fourteen to one sixteen relating to the five hundred Kent Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Wrestler's district by the Brooklyn Navy Yard. The proposal consists of multiple actions to develop a commercial development that will include a waterfront esplanade that will be publicly accessible. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council dot N Y C dot gov slash land use. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. You can also email it, email it to us at land use testimony at council dot N Y C dot gov. Councilmember Wrestler, do you have any remarks regarding this project?
Thank you so much, Chair Riley. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I really want to thank the development team. I am very pleased that they have partnered with a distinguished local nonprofit organization to pursue this project. The incorporation of community space within the proposed development is a critical aspect of this project and its ultimate success, as this means the proposed development will be a true asset to our community. Uh, and I'm really pleased that the developer, in partnership with the local nonprofit organization, has committed to not pursue a last mile facility. Um, I think that altogether, this is a a win-win-win for our community, and I'm really appreciative that the develop- development team has been responsive to concerns from myself and my neighbors. Um, and I just want to take a moment to especially thank William Vidal uh from Council Land Use, who was exceptionally helpful throughout this process and provided like truly expert guidance um that I am deeply grateful for. And I don't know that we would have figured out a way to get to yes if he wasn't so smart. So thank you very much, William, um, the development team appreciates it. Um, and I just want to thank my staff, Molly Haley especially. Uh, Mary Ann Alexander was my uh previous chief of staff, who worked a lot on this project. Um, I think the first time the development team approached me about it, I was not yet sworn in as a council member. Um, and so we've been going at it for a while, uh, and I'm pleased that we were able to get here today. I would like to just ask for an expedited kind of a brief presentation, if that's possible, from the development team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. I will now call the applicant panel for this item, which consists of Ray Levin, Neville Troyer. Neville Gottswein, all right, Neville Gottswein and Jeff Rubin.
I do not, but that's, OK, so apparently
Oh, Rick Perisi's here? Uh, Rick Perisi. Council, can you please administer the affirmation?
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record. Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today in response to council member questions?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, fellas. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to land use testimony at council dot N Y C dot gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record.
Good morning, I guess it's still morning. Um, I'm Raymond Levin, I'm special counsel at Herrick Feinstein. Uh, with me is, as we said, was Neville from Marvel Designs, the Architects, uh, Rick Perisi from M F P F, the Landscape Architects, and Jeff Rubin from PHA, the Environmental Consultants. Uh, we have, uh
That's just the intro slide, so
Oh, OK.
Um You just tell them next and all
Oh, OK, oh, I'm sorry, next, next. And next after that, we're gonna go fast, the council member asked for fast. Um, the the co-applicants are seeking zoning actions, including a map change from M three one to M one five at five hundred Kent in South Williamsburg, and you can see the the difference from the two maps in the red area. Next, please. Um, the site is located on Wallabout Channel um with frontage on Division and Kent Avenues, and abuts the Brooklyn Navy Yard to the south. Um, the site, um, north of the site is a new residential development uh consisting of three uh towers, closest being twenty-three stories. Uh, across Kent Avenue to the east is the Roberto Clemente Ball Field and Park, um, and to the south is the is the Navy Yard. Both our, both the the site that we're talking about today and the portion of the Navy Yard that is immediately to the south of us uh currently have open uses, so there's no buildings on them. Uh, next, please. Um, the proposed development uh includes over five hundred thousand square feet of office space, uh twenty thousand squ- square feet of retail, uh, over an acre of publicly accessible open space, uh, over two hundred uh below-grade parking spaces, and a hundred uh plus bicycle parking spaces. Next, please. The project aims beyond hopefully making a positive return on investment uh is to redevelop the site in a manner that links uh the new residential development to the north, the established South Williamsburg neighborhood to the east, and the Navy Yard to the south. The proposed project will contribute to the neighborhood and broader community by improving a vacant lot currently used for school bus parking, uh, creating a public walkway on the waterfront that will ultimately connect with similar public ways both north and south by creating additional public access points from Kent Avenue to the Wallabout Channel, providing space for both offices and retail businesses, which can offer services and employment to opportunities for local residents and generate taxes for the city, including real estate sales and payroll taxes. Um, now I'll turn it over to uh to our design professionals to describe the the buildings to you.
Uh, next slide. I'll I'll introduce my Uh, next slide. Um, Neville from Marvel Architects. Um, so this is illustration just showing the the Brooklyn Navy Yard development and the location of the uh five hundred Kent site just to the north of it, um, just south of um the Williamsburg waterfront. Next slide. Um, another illustration of kind of development along the waterfront with the domino development on the far left, various other residential projects on the uh uh on the right, and then the far right is the Navy Yard and Dock ninety-two. Um, light blue is the uh future um Navy Yard development, and then the pink site in the center is the uh the location of five hundred Kent, kind of acting as this uh juncture between those kind of strings of development. Next slide. Uh, just a note about the design and the orientation for how the massing developed. Um, multiple street kids kind of come together um uh along Division, actually, and part of the site plan uh review and analysis was about introducing a a third access through the site. Um, so the site has multiple entries um to access the the future waterfront esplanade. Um, and uh introducing the diagonal axis in the image on the right um is, you know, a homage to the the, one of the prior street grids that that never made it all the way through the waterfront um uh in the project, so, next slide. Uh, this is a a site plan of the project, uh showing kind of the two volumes that make up the building, a low volume to the north, a taller tower to the south in the pink area, um, also illustrating the the various access points of the site. Um, to the south is a visual corridor that's designed as an upland connection, uh, the required upland connection on the north side uh along Division, um, and then the additional access point um kind of through the center of the site. Uh, since it is a very large frontage, um, it does kind of provide multiple vantage points and access to the the waterfront. Uh, next slide. Uh, the massing in the building uh is illustrated um in in this diagram um where you can see the uh the low volume along Division, which allows kind of the view corridor all the way up from Bedford, down Division, out to the waterfront um to kind of be maintained by having the low volume there. Um, and then you also have the the cut through at the center of the site, providing that additional access point. Um, and then the orientation of the volume uh adds a little bit of interest uh shifting off the the axis and aligning to the the street grid there. Uh, next slide, next few slides are actually just uh various views of the project, so um, this is a view um north on Division, this is a view uh on Kent at the south side of the height- site, looking at the visual corridor, uh, looking up Kent, next slide. Uh, this is a view uh the center of the site at Kent, um, illustrating kind of the proposed illustrative lobby entrance area. Um, move, next slide. Um, and then with this, I think um I can uh hand it over to Rick Perisi to uh talk to the waterfront.
Thanks, 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 Neville. Rick Perisi, MPFP, Landscape Architects. Uh, this slide right here shows uh what both um Ray and Neville mentioned before, which is the connectivity to um Kent. Uh, in this particular project, we have three connection points, uh, two P A As. One is a visual corridor, and that's at the Navy Yard section, one that goes through and under the two buildings, and then one on Division. Uh, the the interesting thing about this project is a lot of this open space is much more voluntary. Um, there is, there was a concept to bring that open space, the Shore Public Walkway, to the street and connect to the park. Uh, and I think we've, we've, you know, we have the opportunity in this project to to bring more open space to the public than in most projects. So, uh, next slide, please. Just the overall site plan, what you see here are those connections to to Kent, and you also start to see the uh multiple levels that step up the building. Another important point of how this project is designed, we are transitioning from Kent at elevation sixteen and eighteen to the Shore Public Walkway at elevation nine point five with ADA connections throughout. So all these spaces have ADA access through, and then they have stepped plazas above that. Next. And this is a view from the water, aerial view. Next. Uh, this is a view what, from the Shore Public Walkway, looking towards the north. Next. And another view from the lower level, we have not a full get-down, but we have a a transition point, ADA transition point that creates a little informal amphitheater area that goes down around elevation six. So gets gets the public closer to the water, um, you know, which we always try to do in in all these public spaces. Next.
Next slide. Uh, so this, um Neville again, uh, so this slide is the same site plan we saw before. Um, this illustrates all the access points mentioned before for pedestrians, but also illustrates the parking entrance to the north uh along Division uh as well as the required loading dock, which is located on Kent. So that was kind of worked through um a lot with both um city planning and with DOT for uh how to kind of navigate the the bike lane on Kent um and the traffic uh through and around the neighborhood. So um the the parking originally had two entrances, one on Kent, one on Division. Parking entrance was relocated to Division, um, and the loading dock, you'll see on the next slide, um, uh, next slide, uh, is designed as a head-in, head-out configuration, so um vehicles entering the site for for loading purposes um are always in full line of sight for anything they're crossing. There's no one backing in or out of the site um to make sure it's the decisive crossing it can be. And um, uh, that's, next slide.
All right, to sum up, this is why we're here today, asking for the council to approve for the subcommittee. Uh, and uh, it's uh, uh, the zoning map amendment, which I mentioned, uh, from M three one to M one five, uh, a number of waivers uh for bulk, given the configuration of the architectural bus- uh, uh, design that we've come up with. Um, there's also a special permit for the parking uh garage, and a certification uh for the waterfront public access requirements are are met. Those are the, those are the requests, um, and we're here for any questions anyone might have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have a couple of questions, to now see if Councilmember Wrestler having any questions. You're proposing a rezoning from an existing manufacturing district to a higher-density manufacturing district to facilitate a commercial development. The Brooklyn Borough President recommended disapproval of this project because this is a large site in an IBZ with waterfront access adjacent to the Brooklyn Navy Yard, which makes it a prime site for maritime industrial use. Why do you believe this site is more appropriate for a commercial use?
Well, we we looked at the market, um, and we came up with this, the notion that the commercial, commercial office use would be uh would be better. Um, some of the reasons for that is in fact because we're located next to the Navy Yard. Uh, the Navy Yard has significant industrial space available, and it's a mission-driven organization, not-for-profit, on city land, and can offer rates for rental that are more competitive than the private sector. So those are a a couple of the reasons. Another reason is that um uh to to use the property uh for maritime-related uses would probably prohibit the fact of having that waterfront walkway connect from the residential area to the north to the Navy Yard in the south. Now, the Navy Yard immediately south of us, their master plan shows a public walkway and also no, no maritime use at that location. Obviously, the Navy Yard itself, which was, used to build aircraft carriers, um, it has the infrastructure for water-related uses. Um, and that's another reason why uh in this general area, that's the better place for them. And I guess the last thing is, is that the Army Corps of Engineers, in looking at uh at Wallabout Channel, uh, found that the, in order to to accommodate um the kinds of of maritime uh uses that that were, that the Navy Yard looked at, would need dredging, and that would just make it uh unfinancable. So those are a few of the reasons why we ended up with with commercial. We also think that commercial is, creates the the context between the residential to the north and the Navy Yard to the south and the park across the street, provides a linkage and and uses that are compatible both with the manufacturing uses to the south and the residential uses to the north. residential uses to the north.
Did you consult with Brooklyn Navy Yard on how the proposed development in public open space relates to the Navy Yard?
Yes, we, I've, I met with them quite a while ago, and we've had conversations with them since. Their open space along the, along the canal meet up with ours, and they, and in fact, we, if, if you recall from the drawing, the, there's a, between our site and their site is now an open space and a, and public way to get to the waterfront. So yes, the answer's yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Thanks so much, Chair Riley. I wonder what we would have gotten if we didn't ask for an abbreviated presentation, but appreciate you all being here today.
I got this, you know, I have these other speeches.
Okay, we'll, we'll save them for next time, Ray. I did, I was remiss in failing to thank and recognize Lena and Brian from the Land Use Division for their great help on this project, so thank you very much. And I also really wanted to just recognize Ashley Thompson from Capolino for her great help on this as well. I can't remember your married name, I'm sorry. It's okay, I apologize. So, just a couple very quick questions for me. Can you state for the record that you have zero intention of introducing last mile facility at this site?
We have zero intention of introducing last mile facility at this site.
And can you speak briefly to how this site addresses climate resiliency concerns, just considering its location on the Williamsburg waterfront?
I will turn that over. There are, in terms of flooding, the project has clearly been made, let me start all over. From Kent Avenue to the waterfront is a tremendous slope, and we've, and Neville, well, that's someone who knows what they're talking about, say something.
So, as, as Rick stated in the landscape portion, it's a substantial grade change between Kent and, and the site. So, you know, first line of mitigation is, you know, the changing grade, which has buffers and things of that nature, to mitigate kind of coastal flooding. But also, any openings into the building that could result in flooding are raised above the flood elevation. The only one that is, you know, potentially subject to it is the garage entrance, and that would be mitigated with conventional dry proofing measures. And anything that got in, well, it wouldn't get in, but Kent is well, well above it, so there's no approach on Kent. So the only entry that we see is feasible, if there were a flooding event, can be dressed with, with normal dry proofing measures.
And can you just, we've had challenges at 25 Kent, even at Domino, at the refinery, in the Navy Yard, in filling commercial office space in this area. Can you speak to your confidence interval for how you'll be able to kind of effectively activate this space and ensure that kind of this is a financially viable proposal, recognizing the kind of post-pandemic marketplace?
Sure. The project was started before the pandemic, when the commercial office market was a little different than it is today.
Yes.
The applicants are still confident in their ability to succeed with an office building in South Williamsburg. The office market in the, along the East River, from Domino down to Dumbo, has been strong, and has been more resilient than Manhattan and other locations in the city. There are a number of new office buildings that, notwithstanding concerns about the market, have been, have been built or are being built. The refinery, 10 Grant Street in Domino, 29 J Street in Dumbo, 18 and 31 Spencer Street, and 347 Flushing are all office buildings, and show a confidence in this part of the city, which may not be seen elsewhere. The other thing that, that gives us confidence is the location next to the Navy Yard. There are a lot of growing businesses in the Navy Yard that are going to be looking to expand and then, and in surrounding neighborhood. This area has a strong local workforce in Williamsburg and Greenpoint. It has lower rents than in parts of Manhattan, and there's a creative atmosphere along the Brooklyn waterfront that attracts creative businesses. So those things we think are important, and also locational advantages of this particular site. We're on, we're on the waterfront, which is a positive thing, we're on a bike path, which is one of the heaviest uses in the city, and therefore the employees can come by bike rather than having to go otherwise. It has open space for the employees and the neighborhood people. There's going to be some retail, and, and the new residential community that's being built surrounding them provides workforce that may come to these office spaces. So for all of those reasons, our client, for whatever the, the general notion is about office space, are confident that this will make sense. Plus, I think if you talk to people, this building's not going to be built for a few years, and a lot of people believe that the office market's going to come back anyway.
I certainly hope so. I hope it's a great success. My final question is, how do you plan on recruiting building service workers and ensuring they receive adequate compensation?
I think that we're going to be working with, with the unions in order to do that, plus we're working with the neighborhood organization to help recruit people, so, yes.
Okay. Any more to say on that, or is that all for today?
I'm afraid I'm not the labor, person involved in the labor.
Okay. Well, I really want to thank the whole development team for working collaboratively with us through this process. I know this was not an easy project to, for all of us to figure out, but I think we've landed in a good place, and I'm, I'm looking forward to supporting it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell. Any more questions from council members? Okay. Being that there are no more questions, this applicant panel is now excused. Counselor, are there any more, are there any members of the public who was to testify on 500 Kent Avenue rezoning proposal, remotely or in person?
No, Chair.
There be no other members of the public who was to testify on LUs 114 through 116 regarding the 500 Kent Avenue rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the item is laid over. I will now open today's fourth public hearing on LUs 120 and 121 related to the 712 Myrtle Avenue rezoning proposal, also in Councilmember Russell's district, but in Bed-Stuy. The proposal consists of a mixed-use residential development with approximately 41 apartments. The rezoning would involve the mapping of mandatory inclusionary housing, and as a result, part of the new housing would be affordable apartments. For anyone wishing to testify on these items, if you have not already done so, you must register online on council.nyc.gov/landuse. Or if you're with us in person, you could contact or connect with one of the sergeants to prepare a speaker's card. If you want to submit written testimony, you can email it to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. Councilmember Russell, you have any remarks for this project?
Chair, could I ask for a point of privilege? Might I be able to ask a couple of questions before the presentation?
Yes, you may be.
Terrific. So, not yet.
I just have to swear them in.
Thank you very much.
I would now call on the applicant panel, which consists of Richard Lobel and Kevin Williams. Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Richard Lobel.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today in response to council member questions?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for the view in public. If you need accessible versions of presentation, please email landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I'll just ask before you answer Councilmember Russell's questions, you just please restate your name or organization for the record. After you answer his questions, you may give your brief presentation. Thank you.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC.
Kevin Williams of GZA.
Great. Richard, Kevin, good to see you again. You know, we should just do a rezoning of all of Myrtle, so we don't have to do these one by one, but look, it would mean that Kevin would have more, our chair would have more time on his hands, which would be good for the world. So, this is a great project. It brings more housing and, to an area where we desperately need it. I think it's a smart mixed-use approach for Myrtle Avenue, and I'm happy to, block by block, lot by lot, continue to rezon this area to allow for more growth and development. You know, one of the, the things that makes me saddest as a council member is that I hear from families, especially in Williamsburg, every single week that they have children who are getting married and forced to leave the neighborhood because they have no place to live. This project by Rabbi Lichtenstein and Mrs. Lichtenstein will be a great asset for our community. I have just two quick, three quick questions. One is, we'll be pursuing option one for this project, just wanted to make sure you're aware.
Thank you for making us aware of that. We understand the community board's preference and, and to the extent the council members...
You've worked with me before.
Of course.
Some things don't change. Secondly, we spoke with Rabbi Lichtenstein and Mrs. Lichtenstein about the feasibility of a windowless room, either at the basement level or ground floor level, being made available for a local nonprofit organization in the community, potentially HESED, which does amazing work in Williamsburg. Just want to make sure that that's something that the applicant is supportive of and on the record.
Yes, that's correct.
Terrific. And then, there are tenants who currently live on these lots. As needed, they will be, provide an opportunity to return to the housing that's built here if they do not have alternative housing.
That is correct.
And I said three, but I'm going to do four because I'm on a roll. Could you just speak to any green elements of this development? Is it subject to the all-electric buildings law? Or do you anticipate it will be subject to that, depending, I guess, on the timeline for construction? And any other elements for sustainability that you'll prioritize on this project?
Yeah. Kevin Williams, GZA, Councilmember, good to see you. Yeah, so it will be all-electric. I think that the build year will make it required. In terms of sustainability elements, of course, we'll be restoring tree pits, swales, along the, the frontage sidewalk area, which is wide in this area. We'll have green roof system or a combined green roof solar system on the roof system, you know, in compliance with, with the latest requirements of local law. Again, I think one of the things that we constantly recommend to the architects and developers for projects, not only in Brooklyn but throughout the city, is that they apply for the very generous grants for the heightened Energy Star requirements from NYSERTA, because there are tax incentives associated with those. And I, you know, I believe that the, both the architect and the developer, property owner, have agreed to those requirements.
Well, I really want to just thank Chair Riley for the point of privilege. Thank you all for this good project, and look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell, Chair Riley. Councilmembers, good afternoon. Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel. We're here today to discuss the 712 Myrtle Avenue rezoning. The next slide. The next slide is a summary of the rezoning in terms of the requests. The first is that we will be rezoning lots 20 through 24 and a portion of Lot 25 in Bed-Stuy, along Myrtle Avenue, from an existing M12 to an R70 C24 district, which would facilitate the development of a new nine-story, roughly 49,800 square foot, 5.57 FAR mixed-use building with roughly 41 dwelling units, including 10 permanently affordable. We are also, as is the case with all such rezonings, applying for a text amendment to allow for mandatory inclusionary housing here as well. And we understand from the council member's statement that he intends to restrict this to option one. The next slide is the numbers behind the proposed development. Again, a nine-story building, roughly 49,800 square feet. There would be a base height of 95 feet, after which the project building would set back 10 feet at the eighth story. There would be 21 bike parking spaces within a bike room in the cellar, 41 units, and 10 affordable at option one. The next slide is the zoning map, which demonstrates from an overall view the appropriateness of the rezoning in this area. You can see just generally from this large view that R70 exists already for blocks and blocks to the east of this property. This was property and, and blocks that were rezoned in the 2012 North Bedford-Stuyvesant rezoning. And so the context here was set at that time. As we look through the next two slides, we'll see why it's appropriate for this specific site. The next slide is the tax map, which shows with specificity both the area in red, the development site, as well as the nature of the zoning change. This entire frontage between Spencer and Walabout, sorry, Walworth, would be rezoned to R70 with a C24 overlay. The next slide is the area map, which I think really well illustrates why this rezoning is so important and so appropriate. One can see across the street two R70 districts, both to the northeast and to the east-northeast. Those were rezoned in 2017 pursuant to the 723 to 733 Myrtle Avenue rezoning. At that time, the community board realized that they wanted to spur development on this frontage. Myrtle Avenue here, a wide street at 75 feet with excellent transportation options in the area, was one which was well-suited for the R70 C24. More recently, in 2023, this land, this zoning subcommittee approved across the street, although not noted on the map, an R70 C24 rezoning for 703 Myrtle Avenue, again mirroring the same district, and now we are merely asking for that same district on the southern portion of that same block frontage. Important to note, in addition to Myrtle Avenue being a wide street, having excellent transit access, we also note that the R70, when paired with the C24, is, is one of the only districts in the city which would mandate non-residential ground floor uses. This is something which was important both to the developer, as well as the community board, to allow for a lively thoroughfare along Myrtle Avenue and for continuous commercial use. The next slide is the zoning change map, again, showing the new R70 C24 as proposed. And the next several slides show the plans and materials for the building. All of these are illustrative. If you want to forward to the last page in the presentation, we come to the proposed unit count, and the applicant has worked with community stakeholders in order to allow for units that are of larger sizes. We're particularly proud of that. With regards to this application of 41 units in the building, more than half of those are going to be two, three, and, and four-bedroom units, and more than a third of those are going to be three and four-bedroom units. So we're going to get some wonderfully nice, large, family-sized units here, as well as, importantly, because of mandatory inclusionary housing, the units that are allocated to affordable units will be in the same proportion in the building as the units generally, meaning that there will be affordable families who, affordable units, which will be given to families who will be in those two, three, and four-bedroom units. We're happy to, to bring that affordability to units of this size. And with that, the applicant team is happy to answer any questions.
That was the question I actually had, so I'm not going to ask that. With that being said, Councilmember Narcisse, do you have any questions?
No.
All right. This applicant team is now excused.
Thank you, Chair.
Counselor, are there any members of the public who was to testify on this application?
No, Chair, there's no members, other members, members of the public who have signed up online or in person to testify.
Okay. There be no other members of the public who was to testify on LUs 120 and 121 regarding the 720 Myrtle Avenue rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the item is laid over. I'm going to move things around a little bit, because I know Councilmember Narcisse has to go. So, I will now open up today's hearing on LUs 117 and 118 relating to the 3033 Avenue V rezoning proposal in Councilmember Narcisse's district in Sheep's Bay, Brooklyn. The proposal consists of mixed-use residential development project with approximately 109 apartments. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you may do that now by registering online at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And with anyone with us in person, you may see one of the sergeants prepare a speaker's card. If you want to submit written testimony, you can email it to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. Councilmember Narcisse, do you have any remarks?
Thank you. Not, I appreciate it. I was going to ask the same favor. Anyway, thank you, Chair. Amazing work here for 33, I mean 3033. One thing I have to report to you, that Community Board 15, except I think we only had two no's. And for me, I've been going through the process in the climate where we are right now looking for home for folks in New York City. I am very pleased with this project, and I want to say thank you to Donna and Tim from Land Use. Of course, my chief of staff, going back and forth, Saye Joseph, to make sure this project is where it is today. My deputy chief of staff, Frank Shea, and Teresa, of course, with all the team from Community Board 15. I want to say thank you to all of them. And I don't have much to say about this project, that's why we're here, it's a great project, and I'm looking forward for that. But one of the things that I want to say is a few questions that I have, and I know I'm going to get the answer. It's about, is there currently...
Councilmember, let me just swear them in before you ask any questions.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Okay. So, hold on a second.
I'll be the only...
We didn't do that, we did it backwards, sorry.
No, no, sorry. I would now just like to call the applicant panel, Neil Weisberg?
Weisbard.
Weisbard, thank you. Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Yes, Chair. Could you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Neil Weisbard.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today in response to council member... in your testimony today in response to council member questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for the viewing public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I will just ask you, Neil, before you answer the council member's questions, just re-estate your name or organization for the record. Once she's finished with the questions, you may proceed with the presentation.
Neil Weisberg, Syfar Shaw, on behalf of Ford Coil Properties, owner of 3033 Avenue V, Brooklyn.
Good going, Councilmember.
So I want to say thank you to you again. It's been a long process, and they are currently eight active. You know, as a former businessperson, I'm always caring about the business because they've been there for so long. We are currently have eight active retail tenants on this site. How many retail spaces will be provided as part of this proposal? And what will be the square footage for each? That's one. Second, please share your commitment to providing the opportunity for existing retail tenants to reoccupy the site, including plans for keeping commercial rents the same, adjusted for inflation, of course. And the third one, please state for the record your commitment to engage the, with Nostron Houses tenants to determine what kind of retail they want to see as part of this project because they're next to this development. Thank you.
Thanks for your question. I'll start with Nostron Houses Tenants Association. Your office has provided me with contact information, and I've sent an email to try to meet with them, just have not arranged that yet. And as you know, we've submitted a letter to your office as well, indicating that, that we will meet with them. The commercial spaces, we're not sure how many there will be, but I can, the commitment of ownership is to provide the existing tenants with priority for those spaces. So if all eight tenants want to occupy the building, there will be eight spaces for them, and they will be at current rents or as adjusted for inflation, as you stated. And as you know, and just for Chair Riley, the ownership has signed a commitment letter evidencing that as well, and provided that to your office.
The other concern that I have, it's for the Nostron Houses. If we're going to have, for them to have an opportunity as well for the retail space?
Yes.
Because they're right across. And we have eight active tenant, right? So how many, at least minimum, the space that you're going to have right now?
So the delineation of spaces hasn't been defined yet. There's 14,000 square feet of commercial space. And we'll accommodate the existing tenants if they want to return. And if Nostron Houses tells us we have this great idea for community space, then that will be taken into account as well, and one of the spaces would be dedicated to them.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time, and let's do it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks for having me. Next slide, please. So the summary of Land Use actions are, this is an amendment to zoning map 29A, which underlines Lot 36 on Tax Block 7367 from an R4 residence district to an R7D district within a C2-4 commercial district. This will also include the area as part of a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Next slide, please. The site is located on the north side of Avenue V. It comprises the entire southern portion of the lot. It is a 20,000-square-foot lot. It has frontages on three streets, two of them being wide. That is Coil and Avenue V. Next slide, please. The site is currently improved with a one-story building that has 11 commercial establishments. And as Councilmember Narcisse mentioned, eight of them are currently occupied. Next slide. This is a proposal of the rezoning map, showing the area in red that will be, if approved, rezoned to an R7D and C2-4 commercial overlay. Next slide, please. This is an aerial photograph of the site. To the east are numerous six- and seven-story Nostron House building, NYCHA buildings. Next slide, please. The proposal is a nine-story building, which will contain 97,000 square feet of residential floor area, 14,000 square feet of commercial, 109 apartments, 27 of which will be affordable. And the site will contain 109 attended parking spaces on two subseller levels, and that is at the request of Community Board 15, who wanted a parking space for each dwelling unit. Next slide, please. The ninth floor will be set back and will be barely visible from the street. And it's also important to note that within 25 feet of the residence on Ford Street, the height of the building may not exceed 55 feet. Next slide. And these are just some renderings of the proposed building. Next slide. And, next slide, please. The area is well-served by bus service, with service to nearby subway stations as well. There's a stop just south of the site. Next slide, please. This area is in an area of minimal flood hazard, and there is a small portion, very small portion, that's located within the 0.2% floodplain. There are no records of underground streams in the area. And the project architect, if there is any water issues during construction, has over 40 years of experience in this area constructing floodproof buildings. Next slide. Floodproofing measures include dry floodproofing areas below grade, utilizing anchoring of the foundations to the piles to prevent flotation, utilizing flood-damaged resilient materials, and utilizing flood mitigation measures such as steel gate systems. And next slide. The building will also contain numerous sustainable elements, including active solar power, a green roof, rainwater harvesting, and environmentally friendly materials. I have some floor plans, but that's the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. The questions I had actually were related to the concerns Community Board 15 had. I know you stated that it was less than 0.2% of floods within the area, but they did have concerns that this was a flooding area. I'm pretty sure residents live over there, they're seeing certain things happening. So I did see that you had a resiliency plan. So I would just say if you can reiterate it to the community board, what this plan is, so they're fully aware. And also related to the NYCHA development that's located by Compressure, some members of the community board live in that development as well. The next question I did have, and I heard you talk to Councilmember Narcisse about, you're waiting for, to organize a conversation with the NYCHA development. Did you have any ideas of how that relationship would be? What kind of partnerships would you have them partner within this new development? Is it going to be community space there? Are they going to have any input on the businesses that go there? Like, what does this relationship look like?
So the existing tenants have priority, so that's upfront. And we won't know until we meet with them, but we do want to hear what their needs are. And we've made that commitment to Councilmember Narcisse. So once we do have that meeting, if I have it before the full council vote, I'll provide you with that information. But we look forward to working with them.
Thank you. And last question, the rendering showed beautiful building. The existing conditions, I think there's like 11 businesses there?
Yes.
I was counting. Do you have enough space for 11 commercial businesses? Or not all 11 will come back?
If there needs to be, well, right now, there's only, I think Councilmember said Narcisse said eight, there might be 10 tenants, but that might have gone down since I last spoke to. They'll be given priority. If 10 tenants want to go in, we'll make space for 10 tenants.
Okay. All right, thank you. There being no more questions, you're excused. Thank you for testifying.
Thank you.
Answered there. Counsel, are there any members of the public who would like to testify on 30, 3033 Avenue V rezoning proposal?
No, Chair, neither online nor in person.
Okay. There being no members of the public who would like to testify on LU's 117 and 118 regarding the 3033 Avenue V rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closing, the item is laid over. I will now open the next hearing on LU's 119 relating to the 197 Berry Street rezoning proposal in Councilmember Gutierrez's district in the Williamsburg neighborhood of Brooklyn. The proposal consists of converting the subseller portion of an existing parking garage into a self-storage facility. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare a speaker's card. If you want to submit a written testimony, you may email it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I will now call the applicant panel for this item, which consists of Adam Tavon and Abraham Benun? Benun, all right. Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Sure. Please raise your right hand, thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Adam Toutman.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today in response to council member questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the viewing public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. The applicant team may begin, just please re-estate your name or organization for the record.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon. I am Adam Toutman of Kramer Levin, Land Use Counsel to the applicant. I'm joined by Avi Benun, Principal of the applicants. We're here today seeking a rezoning to reduce the accessory parking requirement applicable to an existing building located at 197 Berry Street. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the development site or the project area. It occupies the southern portion of the block bounded by Berry Street, North Third Street, Bedford Avenue, and North Fourth Street. Next slide, please. This is the area map from our application. The development site is outlined in red. The site today is located in a special mixed-use district and in an underlying M12 and R6B district. The applicable regulations allow a wide variety of uses, residential, community facility, commercial, and manufacturing, with a maximum FAR of two. And germane to this application, the accessory parking requirement as of today is one space for every two dwelling units in the case of residential uses, and one space for every 300 square feet of floor area in the case of retail. Next slide. The property is also well-situated among a number of public transportation options, including the L train, which runs about three blocks to the north, multiple bus lines, and the New York City ferry. Next slide, please. This is a photo of the existing building. We're looking at it from the corner of Berry Street and North Third Street. It's a three-to-five-story mixed-use building with three seller levels, and it was constructed in 2010. The existing uses include 84 dwelling units, three retail establishments, a health club located below grade, and the accessory parking garage, which is the subject of this application. That garage is located on the subseller level and contains 142 required accessory parking spaces. 100 of those spaces are accessory to the commercial uses in the building, and the remaining 42 are accessory to the residential uses in the building. Another thing that you can see from this image is that Berry Street is part of DOT's Permanent Open Streets program. So vehicles are restricted to local access and deliveries, which generally lowers vehicular traffic on this street. And some number of months ago, DOT implemented two-way bicycle traffic along Berry Street and reversed the direction of vehicular traffic along certain stretches of Berry Street, which is expected to further reduce vehicular traffic. It's a little bit difficult to see from this distance, but along Berry Street is the entrance to the parking garage that I mentioned a moment ago tucked behind that tree. If you can go to the next slide, please, we'll see some close-up images of that entrance. The parking garage is accessed from Berry Street, as I said, and located primarily below grade on the second subseller level. It is an attended garage. Cars are dropped off with an attendant in an approximately 80-by-26-foot entrance area shown here. The rear of the entry area contains two car elevators that attendants use to bring cars down to and up from the subseller parking level. The garage contains a total of 28,000 gross square feet, 2,000 of which comprise this entrance area, and the remaining 26,000 of which are located on the below-grade parking level. Next slide, please. These are images of the below-grade parking area. You can see the two car elevator doors in the upper-left image. Really, the story that these images tell is that the car garage is severely underutilized today. When we started this process a couple of years ago, on average, only approximately 80 of the 142 parking spaces were utilized at any given time. That number has gone down as we've worked our way through this application process. And it's actually an inflated number in that the garage charges rates that are well below market rates in the surrounding area. Those below-market rates inflate utilization of the parking garage. And even with those lower rates and the higher utilization, the garage still operates at a loss. So we've identified a few reasons for this. First, the zoning regulations that are in effect today do not reflect the observation that the city has recently made in other contexts, which is that development sites in transit-rich areas do not require as much parking as other areas. But there are also a few factors specific to this location. Chief among those is that residents in the building have told Avi on a number of occasions that they don't like to use the garage because the operation of those car elevators results in significant delays in retrieving cars. And further, we believe that the implementation of the Open Streets program will only further reduce demand for the parking garage. Next slide, please. So this shows the proposed rezoning. The southern half of the block would be rezoned from the existing M12 and R6B paradistrict to an M14 R6B district. A very small portion of the development site would remain outside the rezoned area, but under the split-lot regulations of the zoning resolution, the new zoning would apply to the entire site. Next slide, please. The only effect of the proposed rezoning would be to eliminate the accessory parking requirement for the commercial uses in the building. The use regulations, bulk regulations, and loading regulations would remain unchanged. By reducing, or rather eliminating, the accessory parking requirement for commercial uses, the total parking requirement for this building would go from 142 spaces down to 42 spaces. Next slide, please. As part of the application, our environmental and traffic engineering consultant, Philippa Beben Associates, conducted a study of parking supply within the vicinity of the property. They found a surplus of both off-street parking spaces and on-street parking spaces, and concluded more generally that a surplus would remain with the proposed parking reduction. To take you through that study in some greater detail, these are maps showing the off-street and on-street parking locations within a quarter-mile radius of the property. There are 10 existing parking garages within that quarter-mile radius, containing a total of about 1,500 parking spaces. And the curbside or on-street parking accounts for an additional 1,500 parking spaces. Next slide, please. So between these two sources of parking, we found that utilization rates generally range from 75% to 96% over the weekday, midday, and overnight periods. And that equates to an average of about 450 available parking spaces within the quarter-mile radius outside of this site. Next slide, please. So those numbers by themselves indicate that there is an adequate surplus of parking, but the most rigorous way to do this analysis is to account for projected increases in demand resulting from population growth and surrounding development in the area. And even when taking into account those factors and the proposed reduction of parking, again, we found that there would be adequate surplus in the surrounding area. Next slide, please. So the rezoning would allow an approximately 18,000-square-foot portion of the below-grade parking area to be converted to a self-storage facility. The self-storage facility would be designated, or rather designed and operated for short-term use by local residents and small businesses with small closet-like units. This is an illustrative floor plan that shows the general sizes of those units. They're intended to all be less than 50 square feet. They're all almost about four square, four feet wide, again, keeping in line with that vision of closet-like storage space for local residents and small businesses. From what we've heard from residents and businesses in the building and in the area, there is a very real need for a facility of this type. Next slide, please. This is another illustrative floor plan of the at-grade entrance area, which would be repurposed to serve both the existing parking garage to remain, reduced in size. That's shown in yellow, and that would be operated with one car elevator. The area shown in purple would be used for the proposed storage facility with a dedicated elevator that, instead of being used for vehicles, would be used for customer access. Next slide, please. So we are pleased to report that this application has the support of residents in the building, including the condo board, the health club in the building, and of course, the community board, the borough president, and the city planning commission. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I believe you answered them with your presentation, but I just want to ask them for the record. What is the current parking utilization rate? And how would this change impact existing residents?
Are you asking about the utilization rate in? Are you asking about the utilization rate in this garage?
Yes.
So, the conservative number we've been using for this application is eighty spaces out of one hundred forty-two. Very quick math, that's around sixty percent.
Okay.
That number is actually lower today, and interestingly, among residents who have the most convenient access to the building, as of today, there are only three or four parking spaces that are rented on a monthly basis.
Okay. And how much are the parking spaces? Do you know?
I'm going to ask Avi to answer that question.
Right now, we have less than two hundred dollars, like hundred and ninety-five, but a lot of people are going out and coming back, so they shopping around, and then we try to lower the rate and bring some people back, but it's kind of like a game in between the other garages. We have to keep it lower, even from the garage like two blocks away. One of the other thing is dailies that some other garages supplement their income with. We don't have those mainly because the street is closed and nobody's getting out, moving the gate, moving it back. And also, if they do that, there is a whole foods garage that is free during the day, so if you really want to park, you just park there.
Okay. All right, thank you. There being no more questions, you guys are excused, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counsel, are there any members of the public who is to testify on one ninety-seven Berry Street?
No Chair, there is no one signed up online or in person to testify.
There being no members of the public who is to testify on LUs one nineteen regarding the one ninety-seven Berry Street rezoning proposal, the public hearing is not closed and the item is laid over. I will now open today's hearing on LUs one twenty-two and one twenty-three relating to the Prince Point application in Minority Leader Borelli's district along the southeast shore of Staten Island. This is a residential development project that has long been in the making. The application seeks a tax amendment extending the vesting provision for the project. Applicants also seeks an amended layout for this housing subdivision, which will require the mapping of new streets. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you would like to prepare and submit a written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now call on the applicant team panel, which consists of Robert White, Robert Huberman, Philip Rampulla, and Ellen Hay. Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Can you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Ellen Hay.
Robert White.
Greg Fleischer.
Robert Rampulla.
Rob Huberman.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and in response to council member questions? Thank you.
Mr. Frazier, I just need you to fill out a speaker's card if you're going to be You guys did already?
We have four speaker cards and five people. Somebody didn't.
Yeah. Thank you. No, it's all right. Thank you for the viewing test, uh, excuse me, for the viewing public. If you need accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Thank you for being here today. Just please reinstate your name and organization for the record.
I'm Ellen Hay from Herrick, Feinstein. Give a few brief words introducing our team, and then Phil Rampulla will make the presentation. I'd like to introduce Rob Huberman from Herrick, Phil Rampulla from Rampulla Associates Architects, Robert White from AKRF, and Greg Fleischer from Capital Environmental Consultants. This approximately thirty-seven acre vacant site is located in Prince's Point neighborhood between Wolf's Pond Park to the east-north, Lemon Creek Park to the west-south, Purdy Place to the north, and Raritan Bay to the east-south and southwest. The developer purchased this property in two thousand and seventeen from the former owner, Mus Development. Over the past three decades, the development site, in addition to multiple land use approvals and associated restrictive declarations, has also been the subject of New York State DEC review, permits, and restrictive declarations. The three primary land use goals for the past thirty-five years of efforts to develop this site have remained the same. To provide residential use with public access areas which remain consistent with neighborhood character and the existing adjacent parks. Support environmental goals in accordance with New York City Waterfront Revitalization Program and the New York State DEC standards. And in conformance with the Borough President's two thousand and twenty standards for new residential developments, provide map streets and infrastructure consistent with current New York City DOT and New York City DEP standards. The application seeks approval on three actions. A city map amendment for four new fifty-foot-wide streets within the site, authorization under section ZR 10764 to adjust the boundaries of the previously approved zoning lot subdivision, and the chairperson modification of the fifth amended restrictive deck. At this point, I'd like to turn over to Phil, and we can have the slides.
Good afternoon. Next slide, please. One of the things that's very interesting about this project is normally, these privately-built streets would go to the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals for approval to build on an unmapped street. In the last mayoral administration, they got away from BSA approving GCL, General City Law Thirty-Six Streets, and we were instructed to map these private roads. Next slide, please.
Phil, can you just wait one second? I think we just experienced the Zoom problem.
So this is...
Wait, just, just hold on one minute.
Okay.
We're going to put the hearing on pause because we're seeing technical difficulties.
Do you have a physical copy of the presentation by any chance?
I don't.
I do not.
So let's just wait one more minute. Phil, I know you're very accustomed or familiar with this project, so are you able to do this presentation without the slides? And then maybe you can send it to the Chair and to us afterwards?
Not a problem.
Okay.
I can do it.
Is that okay with you, Chair?
Yes, that's fine with me. If that's okay with the applicant team.
That's fine with us.
Okay, then you may continue.
So it's a great site plan.
Nope.
There we go.
All right.
So that's the existing conditions, and you can see that the site is surrounded by water on two sides, and it's actually the lower Raritan Bay. This is a ninety-four-unit, single-family detached home development. Previously, fourteen of those houses were built, and you can see them up on the slide because they face on a city map street. So the developer was able to buy the project in two thousand and seventeen, and those first fourteen went up. Next slide, please. Or shouldn't I even ask?
Just leave it.
So, access, pedestrian access, okay. So to our left is Lemon Creek Park, and to the right is Wolf's Pond Park. And one of the goals was to create two pedestrian paths that are on each side of the tidal creek behind the houses that were built, to have pedestrian access link one side of the development to the other. There is one access point for public access by the newly mapped street on the right side of the screen, and that comes down and has a circular shape to it, and there are four cross streets that connect the loop streets. Streets will be open to the public on a twenty-four-hour basis. Within the private development itself are two public access points for scenic overviews because we're at a much higher elevation than the water. The water is at elevation zero, and we're at about elevation sixteen, so we're about sixteen feet above the water. In addition to that, to the very, very right of the road that leads into the project site is a public pedestrian access that goes along the beach. So they have access that goes around the site to the bottom and then leads into Lemon Creek Park. So besides the two pedestrian links to the parks, there is also public access within the development, and there's public access at the beachfront. When we first started this, and I can't, in two thousand and six, in two thousand and six, the roads were only required to be thirty feet wide. Next slide, please. And that was, and that had a hundred and four dwelling units when the roads were thirty feet wide. God bless you. The next slide would be in two thousand and nineteen, and that's when the roads would be thirty-four feet wide, and we went down to a hundred and four dwelling units. Then in two thousand and twenty, the fire department changed the regulations to have newly created streets from thirty-four feet to thirty-eight feet wide, and we went down to ninety-three units. And that was in two thousand and twenty. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, the fire department changed the regulations once again. They went to thirty-four foot-wide streets, which means a fifty-foot mapping because you have thirty-four feet for the pavement, and then you have the planting strip on both sides and the sidewalk, that comes to be a fifty-foot-wide street. So we're asking for fifty-foot-wide streets to be mapped within the whole development. These will, the infrastructure within the streets will be built to DOT standards. It will not be private road standards, and the owner will deed this property to the City of New York, I believe, for one dollar. So there's no acquisition cost at all. I'd be glad to entertain any questions at this point.
Okay. Just going to entertain you with three questions, okay? Can you describe how the public access areas will operate and will they be open twenty-four seven?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Go ahead.
Yes. The answer is yes, and the access is open from dawn to dusk.
Okay. How would they operate? Can you give a little bit more detail?
Well, it's a private development, so anyone living in the community will be, in the residential area, will be able to utilize the public access areas. And with regard to those living in the community, they can walk over and walk through and go to the public access areas where they, oh, I'm sorry, can't hear me. I'm sorry. They can access the same as the private residents.
Thank you. This is a very important question, especially to the community and the minority leader. Will the development team commit not to place any gates at the entrance of the public accessible spaces?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not quite sure what you mean.
Not to, not to close it off so that people...
We will not construct a physical barrier to close off?
Yes.
Correct. We will not.
All right, thank you. All right, and is there an estimated timeline to complete this project?
I think build-out's going to take probably three to four years.
Three to four years?
Yep.
Okay. Starting when?
We can probably start late winter, early spring of next year, if this gets passed.
Okay. All right. All right. There being no other questions for the applicant team, you are now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who is to testify on Prince Point application?
No Chair, there is no members of public in person or online who wish to testify.
All right. There being no members of the public who is to testify on LUs one twenty-two and one twenty-three regarding the Prince Point application, the public hearing is not closed and the item is laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, land use, and other council staff, and the Sergeant Arons participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.